Hold on or call me back or? Okay. First start with the profit and loss budget versus actual.
Yes, we're on page three already.
Alrighty. Well, first for this be for the first month of fiscal year, so it's July through the end of July. Each week, of course, we'll be doing a year-to-date and the months will accumulate. So for this month, the first month of July, we took in property taxes of $136,974.55 versus our budgeted $172,281. And difference of under-budget variance of $35,306.45. And we had other revenues of $12,453 versus budget of $0.44 versus the budget of $14.83 and $0.63. So over-budget favorable variance of $10,096.81. Total income for the month $149,427.99 versus budget $178,758.64 For a variance under-budget of $29,330.65. In terms of our expenses, we had total expenses of $63,996.48 versus total budgeted $94,081.79. Our debt service, of course, is to budget, no variance. Professional services, we have $44,503.43 variance. Operations, $21,532.66 variance. All the variances are under-budget variances, which serves to give us a net income for the period of $85,431.51. Versus our budgeted $84,676.85. So we're just about even where we are budgeted. And most of these variances will smooth out during the period throughout the year. Are there any questions regarding the profit and loss budget versus action? Could you repeat that, man chair?
The $30,085.31, how do we manage to have that?
The...
Yeah, the total expenses, we have $62,046.31.
Right, you're saying why that variance?
Yes.
That under-budget overall variance is based on each of those line items being under-budget for this month. So if you, the majority is in operations. You see it?
Yeah. Okay. About $21,000, it's pretty much $532.31, pretty much the operations. Alright, any other questions?
The next is our balance sheet. We have a total in checkings in general and payroll of $628,421.83. accounts receivable $865.00 for a total current assets of $629,286.83. And total fixed assets of furniture building improvements, library, books, and furniture fixtures, a total of $657,503.81. And that's net of depreciation for total assets of $1,286,789.91. You see a negative in terms of accounts payable, that represents credits on our vendors amounts that they actually owe us. And those credits can be applied to future purchases. And then I told equity of $1,287,013.81 With the credits equals total liability and equity of $1,286,789.91. We still have excess of cash in our checking account and I know the board is still making a decision on what amount to invest.
What's happening with that is I believe the last time the company was here that you and I had that conversation with, we got to be ready to go. But I believe Mr. Matson was asking about the third world investments and they said that they would initially provide us with some documentation regarding that. And I didn't mind the gentleman that was, you know, asking more because I could sit there and I said, we're ready to go. And he was willing to that documentation regarding the third world investments. So I have to refer that from him. I will reach out to him.
Alright. Then I'll move on to the Treasury report. And first graph just illustrates our expense summary. Where operations works makes up 86.15%. Professional services 5.68%. Collection 4.14%. Debt service 2.21%. Other expenses 1.82% for our total expense picture. And next is income, of course, there's just property taxes as always, majority of 91.67% and other 8.33%. Any questions regarding those graphs? Okay, just one other note there, the audit for last fiscal year is about to begin and we have to schedule an opening audit meeting within the next week. You know, beginning with the interim director with Emin to schedule their availability with the auditors.
I'd like to be a part of that, just to see where we are. Okay, just one other thing, what I didn't notice was, we had a conversation regarding amendment of budget for 46 contingent workers to be onboard. So we could have a larger staff and we need to look at that to hopefully make it up to do.
You're saying you want me to make a recommendation on how much that amendment should be?
I thought because that was what you guys were wanting to have a conversation about.
Okay.
So you guys did not have that conversation yet?
No.
Okay. If you can, if you can do that, you know, as soon as you can.
Okay.
Because I probably going to have that, I believe I have that on the agenda as an action item. Or we can go with something, because we don't have any figures to go along with it. Because we don't have any figures to go along with it.
Alright. I can make contact tomorrow and and have that discussion.
And under the a budget for forty-six continued staff for finance recommendations. Because I thought you guys met, that that was something that you guys, because I definitely made and you guys will read, um, get your up to date, but also make a recommendation. And that's why I had was the action item, because we get down there, there's something, you know, about the industry. He said, that's important, something for recognition.
Yeah, well, I I I I never met with them on that, so I can. This earliest tomorrow, you know.
Forty-six people uh contingent, so we got the down on our basis, it would be part-time. Okay, so again, if it's a number staffing, we have one, how how that affect us as far as operation work.
Okay.
So if you continue the 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 way you think so. Okay.
Okay. Well, well, then.
Just I was thinking about that specific. The last event was that when I was doing, so that maybe that's the system. So, and the profit for that was well over eighty thousand dollars. Well, it was what the person they did with their company, but uh he was uh quoted by change very little ticket. He's a gamer, I think. Okay, thank you, Mr. Harden. Um, so can we get a motion? To take me. Do you have a second? Second. Discussion? Do you really want to?
Um, in regards to the contingent staff, another thing on that for now. But also, I, in addition to Mr. Harden's recommendation for the budget, I'd like to also understand what the going rates for contingent staff. You know, you'll tell us what we get for.
No, what he also does is he will, it's he'll look around the state and whatever it is. Okay, after part-time employees, based on education or whatever. He 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 will be doing.
Well, if he's if he's going through, if he would be going through an agency, typically there's a markup on him souring because the agency gets a percentage of those. So you're talking about hiring direct part-time?
Yes, correct.
Yes. Okay. So, he will call? Trust me, Mary. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Harden. Hope you're feeling good.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening.
How's your mom?
She's recovering well. Thank you for asking.
Okay, always, and I cross him in my prayers. And thank you for the great job that you're doing to keep us on track.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Now we're on to action items. Um. I need a a motion to table the budget for the forty-six contingent staff for financial recognition because um that information is not going to especially have a negative impression than one or the not giving away to interview the vendor. Who's there? The uh uh table? Table uh the action item for just six contingents. Yeah. Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Discussion? Hold on. Let's see what's um. Yes, Treasury, actually. Did I? Did I say? Yes. That's there. Thank you. So we'll we'll take that. Okay, so I asked you for a request for a proposal regarding the book. If you walk in, if you look to your left, you look up at the ceiling and that wall. And this company, it's still under 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 warranty, that's fine. Um, but they need to do a better job. It's my understanding that something about trade or something where you suppose they're in here, and I would think that with a company, then that would be something that would be done and that would be a part of the unit. So I'd like to write you up for for work, lots of that's work for perhaps getting new work. So you said, then we come out for other areas that they pass. Okay, and I'll go back over this area. If you look, I'm listening to that video, but now it's really bad. The tiles are um leaking down on the walls and walls are on the on the drywall, not blocking, but they're so all of a sudden, that can be done. Yes. Turn your side of the question.
Are you talking about by the Michigan River? Is that the area you're talking about?
I'm talking about walk-in, walk-in door. This bottom door down here, this side.
Sorry, I've seen that. Yeah, okay. That that's where it's sleeping here.
Oh, it's it's really bad. Yeah, it's like, you know, you have, you know, you, I was told that, um, it was like pouring and we have to break the couple of weeks ago. So you're looking at me, so I have no questions. At least two seven. All the area, two seven sections. I mean, I mean, I would not, I believe the Michigan, this was purely in nineteen sixty. You were, that was my next, okay. It was purely in nineteen sixty, so I would be a part of it, but that was my next step, yes. So we never had the press. Um, we've had repairs on, but I haven't been in New York since nineteen sixty. Let anybody know what here is, and I wouldn't know that's what it is. Okay, so that was, you know, so so I want to have our people to go fresh because everybody has something they want to add. So we are people that show to avoid first, and then we do it. Hopefully, prepare them before I second you. And if there is, uh, you know, give a timeframe. Our fee. And post. So we we first we need to redo, make sure the world according to what I said. And then look at a timeline. Thank you. Something that needs to be done, contact the workers that at least can build the work. We still have a company that's out there coming. Do something until we can get our people on natural good um recommendations. For the. Yes, I was just trying to say we have to. Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, well, as soon as you get to ground, we review, we'll be very mobile, especially, especially me, you know, the board. So that's that's. So at this point, I just want to be fully insured, uh, providing the RFP forward. So I need a motion. Let's say RFP. Again, uh, to you there. Okay. Discussion. I have a discussion about the RFP for repair. What from the. Well, this. Well, that's why my discussion is in terms of the repair. It's been repaired a number of times, and I would say that at this point in time, it might be significant. You can do it forward or something else. Chair, I trust me. Can you do that?
I do, um. So, um, I was just thinking, you know, read, I did read Edmund's email about the drain. And he said, the moving company said that it was a result of a flawed drain.
Yes.
And I would like to know from them. And I would assume there's a cadence they should be coming out the check. So, you know, instead of us waiting till it claws back up, if we could have it come in or set cadence until such kind of place. That way we can avoid it being broken. So, you know, I think we need to contact them.
Well, they come out every three months and check though. Well, I I but I think it's moving more than that. But at this point, I did think that, um, if you still don't want me, then we should have them to come out.
Yeah.
And we will take care of that. I'm sorry.
He mentioned in his email that it was a flaw, but it's.
No, he was talking about in terms of being repaired. They repaired it several times. So no, we're not talking about.
Yeah, we're talking about.
I I don't know.
No, no, no.
The way I I don't see. No. No, so we we were talking about contacting them and seeing, you know, or or looking at what the contract says in terms of the repair work that they have. See what they can do regarding, so we need for. Another discussion. I think, um, it's been moved and second, um. My concern is for the night, you're interested in many or drawing that motion and staying in another direction. Like I said, to the goal that that's for our fee for to install. So installing. Uh. Second, we have a discussion. Okay. Chairperson. Yes. First, actually, well. Vice Chair Mary. Trust me, what is? Yes. Senator Allen, yes. Obviously, this regarding, we have paid off heating system, new air conditioning systems are having places nineteen sixty. Okay, so we're good on those things. I would like to, you know, mention that we continue to improve our library and to talk to more people coming to the library, and we continue to do, improve this type of thing. So since we paid, they stayed off in June, the air conditioning system. Um, I would need to do much for new work. So, you know. That's something I'd be considered when we're in our piece. Okay. Reboot and reboot the property shorts, you. You have.
Yeah, it's in your package.
In my package?
In everybody's.
Well, that is.
Three seconds.
No, I asked you to do that, me. I wanted to have it in advance so that I could read it first before I chair it.
Oh, it was in the one I sent out in email.
Correct. So at this point in time, I believe we have was it last year or was it earlier this year that we had someone from the company that come out and talk about calls for whether you choose the or or the one. So you do look at that in your. You have a question, James, nineteen. Twenty-four. Do you have contracts or publics provided? And if you know something, I'm sorry, just go back to the. It's not, mine's been twenty-five. Twenty-four. So we have an entire proposal here, or the chain in the in the library. The true policy. So highlights, let me see what's covered. So if you have a chance to look at this already. Any questions? Can I recommend a discussion? I only have been with, or have this policy with the Michigan. As far as I know, this is really popular before I gave my board. I gave my board in two thousand.
I I just asked that question. I didn't know it was a whole over from Minnesota part of the city, yeah, because I know their their members of the Michigan, we also. Um, I do. I mean, at this point, I think we're too close to the neighborhood, it's been interesting to do anything, but I know the ALA and the NLA both have insurance policies that are specifically designed for our library. So I think as we move over next year, before we get to this point, we should explore what those look like so we have people to compare it for.
Well, there's a big revenue increase, the increases from seventeen eighty-five. I I believe what you can still do, you know, and we're preparing for next year, is to initially reach out to NLA and LA and and see if they have the offer and I can do that. Okay, and then we can have a something that compared to the thing. And I think it's like any other insurance company, I don't think there's a penalty if you change company or something like that. You know, but we can do that. So, uh, uh, I'll be going to do is see what, uh, I know that in LA, I often in terms of uh, public libraries. We ask them, you know, they have made a new job to us. To do some comparing parts, we don't know what we currently have. And usually have some work for the agencies. And so meantime, what we'll do, you know, actually, you know, we got insurance. It is out of the view for someone to move and accept this current insurance policy problem. At stake.
So I did know that it's now, I've now had a life insurance policy, but I do see that there is no store back. So I know that that's typically an efficient or policies. And we do not have that issue for it. Is that something?
Tell to to Ryan. The board, um, presumably some, they asked me about that coming in. Call for it.
Right now?
No, not right now. I'm sure they've done for the day.
Yeah.
But we can reach out later tomorrow. Well, actually, next week. About four C. We so there's rain, like in Mississippi or eastern, or that one's right now. There were none personally, I mean, it's right here.
So there is blood on your shoulders, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't know, blood, it looks like it's covered. I don't know.
Well. Because it's usually I thought some of the flaws. Not necessarily, we've been shooting policy these days. I mean, okay, we can ask. So let's ask the question, we have, we have the floor, because we don't have a floor. I know, and I know we have. So that's a problem, you don't get. Okay, I don't. No, I think there's something.
I guess that's more of a.
Yes, yeah.
So, that's not too far. The intent I was thinking of, is like discussing that. So, at this point, I need to, to. Check the. Insurance and load. Insurance also. But anyway, I need more.
I, I will let me accept the Michigan municipal insurance policy as.
Second, discussion. Before the, before the discussion. There's no further discussion, we will vote.
First person. First person. Sir.
Yes.
Thank you so much for that. Ready for the second read? Of the eleven. Can you follow the.
So, what are, I'm not, who are you? I wasn't here, but I was part of it.
Right.
Um, so, there was, uh. A change to, I don't know what section. Um, there was a request to, or a change that was proposed to.
Secretary.
I mean, the secretary's role to allow the secretaries to, um. Defer, um. The writing of minutes to the director. And then the director could, um, designate someone to take on that.
Secretary will be responsible. Or, or secretary will be responsible for big, special board meetings.
Right. So, that was that, and then, um, there was an amendment to the. The verbiage surrounding the chairperson. Um, and that was the, regarding the appointment of committees. So, the verbiage was the chairperson shall preside. The new verbiage is the chairperson shall preside at all meetings of the board. Point committees, which must include any PPL board members that volunteered their participation. And then goes on. To continue from the prior version, authorized calls for special teams and generally to put students of the. Inside.
And the difference with that is that, um, it would remain the same because of actions that initially the people on the board. Uh, do not want to participate for being assigned, they was open for anyone to volunteer.
So.
That was, that was in the first read.
Okay, well, I wrote that first. So, what I, you know, make sure it's clear is that, what we've seen thus far is that. There's not all these participations, they're not always asked. So, you can't always just volunteer. And I want to make sure that whoever is the chair is asking for volunteers before moving on to a plan. So, that's the intention of the.
Okay, discussion. I'd like to share the. That I said before is that initially the chairperson, um, maybe that's. Libraries, another, like, uh, process, either the chairperson or the president. Wants someone to accept the, the people applying to participate, um, in subcommittees, in subcommittees, where you want to volunteer.
Verbiage that I brought forward is the verbiage that was agreed upon after. So, that is our, I understand that you don't agree with it. But what we brought forward is what we want.
That was a recognition, remember that what a subcommittee does is they bring that recognition.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, the recognition was, was taken into account for.
Okay.
And so, once you finish your first read, we will discussion on that. So, now we will go to second read. And so, Angela, can you go back and tell us what your recognition is?
But it was, as we said, that the chairperson would allow volunteers.
Can you guys go, um, stand.
So, it's, it's a, we will first read, everybody agrees on first read, we proceed to the second. So, this point, we read that, if we agree or disagree, then we go forward. So, we read, when everybody agrees with that, we can go forward and have a second read.
For the, in the third read, there's going to be actual voting. So, I think that, um, maybe the point that they were trying to. The chair to survive. Thought that is a change, no matter if you make a recommendation, it's a change. You know, who has to make changes. Look, so, right, so. She's saying that she's from community and that was, we'll agree. That was the verbiage that was agreed, going back to the committee. How they retain them. Really, that was. Let me explain again. Subcommittee, that's recognition for the board, the board. The student discussion number. If there's, if there's a disagreement or there's something wants to change, then you have that discussion, that's it happens in the first and second read. And then once we decide on that in the second read, then on the third read is when you actually have a resolution inside of. So. I guess I first, yes, that was the verbiage to read.
Am I?
Okay, I'm sorry. We had discussion last time, um, Chanel wasn't here. So, like, back here discussed what is.
Well, I, yeah, we were, but I, I don't think there's a bad business, I mean, the library, I mean.
No, it's, yeah, no, I read that off about what we said in our meetings, I read that off and then there was discussion about it. Yeah, so you're.
Who said you was a leader?
I just have such a.
Well, great.
At least, if I don't understand, we, 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 one more time, we just, the last time we did this poll. We, we have a limited amount of time, but we, not, not necessarily for a year. But in terms of the amount of time that we're going to, we'll have a discussion regarding condition. Or any particular things. So, we have a discussion here.
I propose, um, specific verbiage that was brought before this board last meeting. Same time, let's begin to read this myself. Now, I'm trying to understand, you're saying in that meeting, you guys changed the verbiage to say.
To leave it as theirs, okay, at that part. And to add the, and the part that was added was that, so when you clear that anyone. Point to a subcommittee deciding, I want to say, probably, it was open for anyone on the board to volunteer. If you know that subcommittee.
And so, at this point, can we go on that again, since this is the second read now?
Or you can't vote on it until, till your, till your third read. When you have the resolution, and then that's when you have to vote on it. And the resolution will have the language and which to be honest.
So, now that this is the second read, I'm here and I don't agree with that. I want to go back to the verbiage that I recommended.
And that's only your work, you think.
So, what happens now?
You have the second, you back to second read, and you stated your opinion, okay? And then the resolution will be written out, okay? We can have a, a read to the resolution, it's written out.
What will be written in it?
Cause I'm. I'm gonna finish first. Come on to that. I'm in the middle of, of, and explaining something, and then you, you're cutting me off.
Because I'm, I'm trying to.
At this point in time. If I'm talking, and I'm trying to clarify something, you can't cut me off. And tell me what your opinion is. I didn't do that. This point in time. You have the language, okay, you have the recommendation from the subcommittee. And that is a recommendation. And so, at this point in time, the recommendation is written out for a resolution, okay? And that resolution is presented, and it's not correct as it was presented the first two times. Then you vote no one, and the resolution will kind of come back to the board for amendment at that time. At this point, we're going to move forward. Yes. After. So. After. So, now. When you go, see, it's all, yes. You may look at this first. Or what you want. If you think to be a review.
What happened to that?
So, we, so we brought it before. Myself, Trustee Willis, and Trustee Max, and Kevin, uh, for bylaws. So, we brought it back to the board and stated that as we spread that we would have, reading in, we said. What was your recommendation, re, uh, recommendation? Oh, she can, okay, so her recommendation, our recommendation was that the chair did not appoint the committees, that there will be volunteers for the committees. Okay, so that was, that's what I'm saying, that was the recommendation that we had for the, uh, subcommittee. And then when I brought it here to do the read, first read, it was voted against, we put it the same, but made sure that. It was, people were able to volunteer for the committee. When she was still appointed, but you were able to volunteer, and sometimes what it was still for, you're able to volunteer. It just wasn't. Terrific, like that.
Well, you know, open and sure, but you know, if, um. This is illegal, if we can do. I'm not, it's too much. And so, for that, I would assume. I would. What we thought we. The recommendations. Across. It will be, and, and the recommendation, okay, or the resolution. Been brought before the board first and second read. And on the third read, okay, that's where the resolution comes down. It will be written up at that time for everyone to vote. All you have now is two readings, no, no one voted on it. You just had the, the language, which was actually presented, and anyone that wanted to say something differently from that, okay? And then you move forward to the second read, moving to the next one. The third read, which you know, for you to change your members, has to be a resolution. Has to have every board member saying on there, and the resolution has to be written out, and everyone has a copy of it, and you can vote for it or you can not vote for it. And that's the way we're then, they, they buy, they buy. So, and that is legal, because that's the process. So, for seats, so. On direct. It would be the, that, whatever they put together on the resolution or recommendation. Will be presented to the entire board at the next board meeting. And based on what they have written out is what the board will vote on. Okay, each person for the board has to, has to vote on it. There is no voting now, these are simply recommendations that are brought before the board. And the final resolution will be, uh, presented at the next board meeting. And then written up. As a resolution, whereas, any board member saying will be on there. Okay, and then we'll have to sign it, okay, and the vote shows on the resolution, yays and nays, and signatures of people that have voted for it. And that is the process for the recommendation. So, okay. All right, now, the chair of course. No, we, we, we.
It's making for a discussion, it's all.
If we can, how many times have we, how many times have we, have we, and, and.
I still have questions. That's how we could, so.
Are we doing a decision or?
Okay, but at the same time, if you want to, if it's open for discussion, it's not yours, not choose, we don't have the kind of session.
Yeah, that's what we, you can't do that. Okay, okay, open media, and you can't do that. It's still open for discussion.
I still have questions. Because right now, it's very confusing, if you're saying she has something written down. That was recommended by the committee that you chose, and now you're saying the board is something that was not verbally said, but not written down.
That's not what I said. What I said is the subcommittee will come back with a written recommendation, okay? That, no, that's, 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 that's what I said, that's not what I said. I said, based on what the subcommittee writes out in a resolution, is what the board will vote on on the third read. They got to, the subcommittee will write out the res, of the resolution, and then the board will vote on it. We had two, three minutes to say. It's not a resolution, though. It has to be written out as a resolution in order for the board to vote on. That's our resolution for, for, for the bylaws can be amended. It has to be written out in a resolution form. This is, this is their written recommendation, but it's not a resolution that's written down, it's not. Okay, that's the. The name of this.
I'm just asking for clarification, I don't think I'm the only person in this room that's confused. I don't believe that. You're saying that.
I'm just saying that.
I said.
So, you don't give.
I did not say that, I asked for clarification on what you're saying, because what you're saying is not really making sense at this moment. I'm saying, if she's saying that this is what they wrote out, and this is the thing that should go in the resolution. You're saying, no, that's not what's going to go in the resolution, because what we said verbally last week, which we have nothing to prove that last month, we have nothing, because we don't have any evidence. So, therefore, how can we say what was said, we don't know? So, I'm just saying, you can't just say you don't want to continue the conversation because you don't agree with it. That's not how the word works.
We are a board.
That's not what I said.
That's not what I said. I, I said that there is a time limitation in terms of topics. And how many times a person that had a conversation. We've gotten a discussion in. Sometimes, okay? I don't know if that is the one that's a discussion that begins with. Early three months. It's just the things that it wants. So the, um, so the, uh, bylaws committee. The chair recognizes, I'm sorry, the chair. So the bylaws committee will meet one more time. And when they meet that time, they will draw up a resolution to present the House of Lords. That is correct. All right, so it's in the bylaws committee, so. To write up the resolution. Yes. It is up to the board to vote on. At the next board meeting. So you can, um, put in whatever you want in that resolution. And bring it to us for vote.
That's what I understand.
So the reads don't matter in first and second read. The best one, best one you could, because of that in the, the second first read. So reading and the statements, because then it wouldn't make good sense. You gotta do first read, which is done. Then second read, then. Third, right, or.
Three, four, three, one, yeah.
So then it's usually four. So we need to make this, this a reset.
Hmm, this is the second read. So. Do you need the format on how to do the resolution? I can forward it to. And whatever language you have to decide, you know, whether you come back and vote. Okay? Did you recognize this? I'm sorry, I. So I'm trying to do that still. So, uh, I would like to see you, uh, forwarding to, uh. So. Forward what? What you're going to forward. So that the language will come out right. I'm forwarding a format. I'm not forwarding a language. And so she's on the subcommittee. So that would be for her to go ahead. Or I can forward it to all three of them. I don't have a problem with that. All right. And definitely. Charlie, it's closed. Right, um, um, to, um. Let's see.
It was really nice on Christmas Day at the tree.
It was a very nice setting. I mean, I do. I don't think it's in the last report.
I'm still, I'm still, I'm still. The board.
I thought we were on a process. That would be what I mean.
Okay, um. Just my part, Edwin's going to talk about the program, the building issues and the, um. One of the standard members issues. So that's what he's going to talk about. I'm just, um, going to tell you that each board member, each of you now does a lot up there, so. How about this is everything that's on. Um, the staff meeting for the staff, the first staff meeting will be September sixteenth. The whole schedule is in your box upstairs. Print it out. So that's, so that's that. Um, and that, um, I did go to the city council. On its ninth, gave an update about the library. There is a mayor's brunch on September the tenth. That, um, he's been hosting regular lunches throughout, um, I think July, August and September. And September tenth, and I forget where it is from eleven, I think eleven to one. And, um, so. I just have a presentation. And as far as, I guess, I'm away. We can get everybody signed up for, I'm away on a five month. Whatever other information we can do, sign up for. Association, and I put that, um, wire around your desk to. The source of knowledge.
The phone call for.
Okay. I definitely need to get to.
Yeah, yeah, it's a digital thing. More than you.
Yeah, thanks to all, everybody else that's still processing. So I appreciate your patience with me when I don't know the answer to something or whatever, because I don't know anything. We should do the section we just. Yes. What time is the? Um, it's nine to nine forty-five. So, okay, you'll tomorrow. And that's going to be each time.
So the Monday.
Yes. And the schedule, like I said, the schedule for the rest of this year is in. That was, um, September the tenth. And that is the last one, so, um, because you get to one of the.
Did you receive?
For the, I think. It was on the city council, um, maybe. Agenda, I can let you guys know where it is when I. Every night, because I've been on the calendar, but I just. Um, yes, and yes, or.
Did it comment about?
Yeah, I already know.
Did it comment about the? The rear exam?
Um, my comments, I, of course, this was my first one, so I don't have anything to come here to. But I did think it went well, um. You know, there was a lot of competition for events on Saturday, so I thought it was well presented. Um, and really, I think the vendors were, we had some good vendors, a good. Selection, I guess it was a lot of different vendors, first meeting. I would have loved the train. And that's, I hope that's houses. So. See as well. And I thought it was a lot, but there was, it's from a librarian. Um, could tell you better, but they, they get all their people's comments and they gave out their prices and things, so we made the end of the gate. Nice prices, we're good, so.
Did you get your information time, though, for open dress? Okay, no, you're.
Uh-huh, I got it then. Okay, I sent them some pictures, I don't know. Yeah, it could be online. But I did send it. Set it by four thirty to seven. That I needed for the second class, so just trying to hurry up and edit my picture, so.
I'm hoping for us to. Talking to yourself. I'm starting to see some. There were the years. Um. Let me speak. Um, someone being, I would like to know what the participation was like. Uh, because I know we ran all summer with only children at all. Participated, we see, you know, rose over last year. Um, just so, you know, that follows, we all will, as far as I'm getting more people to participate. But if we need to do more advertising next summer, all of that would help us to understand, you know, what we can support or how we can support.
Going forward, just, uh, you will hear from the librarians. Themselves, so they will be able to. Their report, so I can answer that.
I think the only difference is we did look in terms of calendars for, for the month of June to see who was having events. So we tried not to overlap like seven times four. It's like the open honey, water, resources. We had already been the same time, because everybody was out there. We tried to make sure that we looked at the calendar. And then for the question, they had new bits over there. And I hope so, boy, it was even three thousand. Just a little bit of, and all these other things, so it's just, it's just kind of difficult to do.
Too much, uh, as far as the program on Saturday. We have approximately, uh, two hundred and sixty people. Uh, did the well with that and, uh, signed the waiver. As far as the building, we have a couple of issues with the building. Um, we had a plumbing issue in the, um, in the restroom. Upstairs, and it was a little soft for about a day, but, um. So. We also had an issue with, um. Yeah, you should, yeah. Um, they worked on it for a couple of days and they got it going. So we do. I guess we'll be getting, uh, good voice. Um. We have an employee who had a, um, well, he has, uh, a group issue. He has like a st- a stint or something. And, um, I guess, uh, every so often it has to be. Now, that's some kind of procedure that has to be done. And so, um, okay, don't go down. It'll be okay, but, um, it'll be. Down. Um. Oh, the newsletter, the newsletter has already been, uh, sent to, uh, Hopeless, and we're hoping that they have, um, uh, here at that people's homes by. Say maybe day or. And a big thank you to, um, to. Several, um, QR codes that are in the, uh, that, there's a particular, um, ebook collection that the city mission is offering. And, um. QR code, so that, um, enter the newsletter and then people get this. Yeah, but they know that they can go right to that book collection. Also, there's a QR code for, uh, registering for a library kind, you know. Hoopla, oh, yes, the hoopla app where you can, uh, stream, uh, content. It's another thing. So you can just stare at it, play a lot of newsletter and go right to it with your. So, we're expecting that about. That's it for today, any questions?
What is the, the, the? He looks again. So what, um, is the elementary staff type of seat?
He's a library page, um. He's a miniature, but. It's a gift of the time. Because I, we got, it used to be part of, um, the, oh, what do you call it, the? It was through the, yeah, it was, uh, they call it senior workers or something like that. Anyway, um, you get some people, uh, some seniors who, uh, want to get back to work. Have. Currently pays them for, I think it's two years. And then either they go away or you can decide to hire them. The person was from the senior. It's more. Nobody had that benefit. It's, uh, got something occurred. Okay, you got a little fall and, um, yeah. Feel quite right and so when it was straight down.
As we say, it's not to give those, I'm sure.
Well, we're back tonight, we were, well, now we're counting you again. And for.
I think it was, where did you?
Um, my question is, is it anywhere to be addressed in posting boards?
September is, uh, library guard signup, we're putting up, um, some posters. So, yeah, that goes right along with it.
I, I did, it could be, you said, I don't know. I thought that was a problem with another. Lib, librarian.
I have a problem.
Uh. They wanted to.
Are you talking about the new librarian? Um. I got these, um. Leo, I guess. Okay, so, yeah, the new librarian, um. Wants to. Well, she wants full time, she's somebody that started working. Oh. She's only at work a couple of days a week. Now, so, um. That does affect, um. Certain things, yeah.
Now, does that affect us in any other ways, in a sense that comes along in here? Um, that, that, that affects us in any way we are funding or, um?
Um, eventually, yes, but the next. Say, uh, report is fine, it would be the one after the next, so, um. The next day report is due, um, February twenty twenty-three, and that will be by, so it's. So eventually, yes, the person needs to be replaced, but.
That's what's. Well, wait, this is a matter. I, I, I just don't want any, any problems about.
Okay, we could wait, we could wait. But. I don't, we struggling enough getting a full-time, um, director. Now we have, which didn't come before us. For no kind of approval or whatever, I, I just, I just didn't know people could do this. I just didn't know. That's why I need to leave the thing, or I need to leave the thing. That's not even discussing. All right, I'll shut up, but I need to leave the thing. I need, uh, cause I don't want us for the next go-round, and then here we are, out here looking for another. Director. I don't want that. If you gotta look for another director, then you need to start now.
So thank you, Miss Sachi. I was unaware, um, I don't know if anybody else is aware of the situation. Um, but I would like to be made aware, uh, to each set that it's kind of, you know, the children's area is a pretty significant area. That it impacts, you know, our operations and coverage, um. And if this is not the proper form to do that, I mean, you know, if you were a bit sufficient to say, hey, we're going down by half a head to a part-time person. So that would have been helpful to. Especially not brought it up, and it sounds like you knew, because you were looking for a legal opinion, so. To the extent that you know something like that, we should all know, because we are one board.
We are one board and we just not bring you up because I'm ready for you to do it. And I won't, you won't say anything that literally could jeopardize anyone to have anything to say about him for. Whether it's part-time or full-time, so that is my duty to do.
I understand.
Anything I put in writing, I don't have to introduce against me, so I'm gonna wait till I get a legal opinion.
Stating the facts is, I don't see. Giving an opinion about who's stating this person went through a time of perfect, just a little bit. I didn't know that he was there. So I didn't know that he was there.
I never knew who's there, so I didn't know anything about it. I knew it's true, it's, yeah, when you get this city with opinion. Oh, boy, I'm, I'm a good guy. Do something because. That year of the time coming up, it's one of the busiest, is Thanksgiving, is Christmas, it's Valentine's Day. It's one of the busiest seasons, that's for our little. Um, so. Let me see, but, um, I want to see a copy. I want to see a copy of that.
I think we all would like to see a copy. I don't know if that would be good, I didn't know. Well, we think we're.
Well, we need, um, so what can I do that?
I'm sure. Email copy, or you can print out a copy, so everybody can have a larger copy.
Okay, thank you so much. I didn't know, yeah. Nobody did something about. So I was concerned about, about coming this, that's a big season for us. Big season. We have sunflowers.
Yeah, um. Um, so I don't wanna overstep on that. I do wanna know what significance that, that happened. However, I do understand that it is only the library director that reports directly to us. The director are under their control, so they. I'm assuming good to say yes or no to any requests like that, but to the extent that, you know, something like that, to me, that's kind of significant. Um, but I do wanna make sure we're staying within our bounds, so that, I mean, I hope you're giving people, um. You know, support on this issue, but to the extent that I'd like to understand, does that kind of stuff need to be brought in here? Or is it the expectation that, you know, the library director needs to meet that? Well, that's what I would like to understand, so our attorney.
The library director, according to me, for the library here. My decisions regarding any thing going here, my decision to let my library do that. If there is an issue, they are not coming for, be thirty. The libraries will express, you know, what their concerns are, what their feelings are, and that is important. So, with that being said, um. Who, who's, that's my decision, if that was something that was going to be considered for that person, like the coming deliveries. I had no idea what was on that. Okay, regarding this, because that's something I would cheer with the attorney also. But I have that information, and I will also forward that to them, and that's information that I would cheer with the board. That if the person wants to come before the board, they're allowed to do so, please. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I took you out.
So this is a lot of, like, twenty-four assignment, uh, relationship with the school district. That we established, we think that, uh, on the school district. So even if we need something like the library card assignment, so you have to barcode, not even a lot of extra credit. Or if we can establish some type of relationship with the school, they have to be, that's the. Uh, sports team, a hundred Panthers, a high school, middle school, elementary, so we have. Let me get some other relationships established.
I talked to, um.
We're working on that, yes.
I don't know, so we're gonna fall through.
Yeah, he told me that.
And then we're having, you know, um, celebrity cards at the school, is that only twenty-seven, twenty, what day is that?
We get the cards.
Why didn't you, um, I don't get it, you know? If you want me to, then you're having to get it there. That's what you're going to do, just, you're going to go time. Oh, the problem that you did that, essentially, they, I thought I cheered, he's going to.
He told me about it, but I don't focus this on it.
And that's South America, yes, and that's something that. In terms of outreach, that's something. I'd be flipping my burden to help, definitely for outreach, when you have new packs or drive, or, I think that's something. Oh, special new. So I will move back and talk to. Thank you very much. Oh, the next thing. Uh, about the minutes and the drafts, they, um, all on the website, and then literally, um. Having available for the board to read. Posting that, it is a thing.
Um, is that all we talked about earlier? Yes. So, yeah, I'm gonna have, um. Somebody listen to the party for a minute, so if they get posted. We'll see. Yes, thank you.
Appreciate that. For in future. It means they're probably staying with, uh, on the. Have to be available for the board to, to you. Or through the. So we have all those, uh, get a time, and dress up also for special board to.
Do the minutes have to be approved before they get posted, or they get posted?
In the first draft, uh, no. First draft is what has to be available to the public. Okay, that, and we'll come back to the minutes, but we'll have a special meeting, so we can get those up in months that we don't have. Right, okay, then initially, we can do those and go on yours. And the arguments, you can post those in the next few days, that can post in the next day. Okay. And that's just the draft. And the final approval from the board, unless there's no change, will remain and will be considered the final posting. In that part of the meeting. Okay, okay. My concern is that, uh, prior to, um. April, the minutes are being done. And then, um. All of a sudden, someone else took a position, and you know, it's totally wrong, right? The board of employees, the record, the record is not good, the record is too many. So if you get that, um. We speak of that, at this point in time, more, more comments. More comments from the, uh, secretary. Very.
Have a lot of things going on in our community, and I think the current, the problem is we keep hitting the wall. Because we, we don't have a great, um, special. So I think that's why we keep having bits that we're having low turnout, so we get decent turnout, we get better turnout if we're not. Continuing with other people. Kind of coming in with us and still kind of. That's my thing about that person in the library, um, and also we, like, um. I'm concerned, uh, you know, just about the community collaboration, because, and thank you, I mean, I've been doing a great job of that, or getting into schools and. And you know that, so I would like to also, um, discuss with new going students, that we can start trying to do library trips.
We are going to.
Already, yeah, already, we picked the book and everything, we're having a book club now. That's already doing a great job of that.
Yeah, and then my, my last thing was, uh, marketing, um. With QR codes and everything, I think that's a good start. To get, uh, to get it out.
Oh, and it is, I like, nice, it's great.
Um, I'd like to say, I appreciate everybody who, um. I feel a little passionate about the library and the things that, that are going through, and the point. It's my tendency to be disrespectful, but, um. Sometimes, you know, when I hear things, what I hear and what they actually make, and you're saying, it's totally different. But I assume you're not together for the library and, and the community. It's in my heart, and I expect us to be well and honest, doing some of the things that come, we talked about, ladies, and women, uh. Us, some work conventions that I gave to you, to, uh, to talk about moving forward. We wanna make sure that we prepare for the conference. Saturday, December, it's a really big thing for us, we have six or seven hundred kids in the theater here, and that, so we're gonna make sure that anything we. Figure that out, to be prepared, especially if I have a couple of solicitations out for more stuff, um, for even some, yeah. And I wanna make sure that whatever money that we've been allocated for a particular bit, that we don't have in cash, I mean, once carried over. Because if someone gets this money, we're gonna make sure we realize that we're having that, not carry it over. Some of you do best to have the best of everything that we provide for the community. I like these to be done. Not only in order, but I like the first class. Okay, so I like the, the gifts or whatever you have for the kids. If you need to collaborate with somebody, make sure that the gifts that they have for the children, for the young folks, for the first class, that's what I like. And I say that because. When I have my dress on, and some of the things that came up, I'm disappointed. But at the same time, we enjoy everything, and I'm like, don't throw the football, and I was going to leave the house. So when the hat comes down, football.
I would.
But, uh, but, but I am, actually, I don't have anything to do, and then we move forward. Don't forget, we wanna make sure that our fantasy party in October. First class, love before, we wanna continue that, we wanna advertise if we're separated. That is the motion to adjourn to the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, okay. I had some college issues, but initially enrolled everyone in the Michigan Library Association, so when you remember. And that when you decide you wanna go to the conference in October. I'll make sure you have the right form today, so that I. I'll make sure you have the right form to this, and you fill that out. And she can go in and take care of that by the, that time that you do. Soon, because I'm sure there's a, uh, the early deadline is probably already up. And, um, it's regular, uh, registration, it's open, so it's gonna be, it's before. Please, uh, let me know and then you can get with her so that she can hit you. I know, but she will get there and make it from you, so that you can use a membership, send it back. That note? I need someone. Motion. I'm going to grab, um, one of the. Motion discussion?
Discussion? No.
This one.
Okay, um, the motion is second, so roll go. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. But I believe you guys, your mics pretty much.